Good evening, folks. Hammond City Council is now in session. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance is to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, standing.
Heavenly Father, we come before you, Lord, asking for your grace and your mercy, Lord. We ask that you cover us in the blood. We ask for you to just give us guidance and direction as we set forth and do the things that are necessary for this great city. We ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen. I also like a moment of silence for my friend who passed away, Beanie, who's going to be funeralized tomorrow, my classmate. Thank you so much.
Come in, roll call.
Markovich, Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kelwinski.
Here.
Yulaki.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Henehosa.
Here.
Opinkar.
Here.
Moving on to reading of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Make a motion to accept the minutes for September 14, 2015.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Kelwinski to accept the minutes. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on acceptance of the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
And Councilman Kelwinski.
I move for approval of claims, beginning with claims dated 1615, and ending with claims dated 9/24/15, claim number 5019 through claim number 5359 inclusive. Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Kelwinski, second by Councilman Emerson on the acceptance of the claims. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kelwinski.
I move to amend in claim number 5360 for $2,483.21.
There's a motion by Councilman Kelwinski, second by Councilman Spitali on amendment of the claims. Is there any discussion on the amended version?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kelwinski.
That claim is for travel to attend a workshop in Orlando, Florida by Councilman Higgs. Thank you.
Any discussion? Carmen, roll call vote on the amended claims.
Markovich, Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Yulaki.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henehosa.
Yes.
Opinkar.
Yes, amended claims pass, 7-0, two absent. Now the claims is written. Carmen, roll call vote.
Markovich, Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Yulaki.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henehosa.
Yes.
Opinkar.
Yes, claims pass, 7-0, two absent. Moving on, next item will be public hearings. They are as follows. 1533, 2016 Civil City Budget Proposal Sponsored by Councilwoman Vines. 1536, 2016 Redevelopment Budget Proposal Sponsored by Councilwoman Vines. 1537, 2016 Sanitary District Budget Proposal Sponsored by Councilman Markovich, Councilwoman Vines, Councilman Higgs, and Councilman Spitali. And finally, 1540, Amendment 77, Schedule 7 of the Hammond Municipal Code as it relates to parking schedules for 1117 Merrill, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines. Anyone in the audience like to speak on any of these four topics? Now's your time.
Lorizolno, 7142 Forest. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the proposed 2016 Hammond City Budget. This is a little difficult, though, as at this time, the state of Indiana's gateway only publishes a summary page and does not publish any detailed information. I did contact Heather Gray, the city comptroller regarding this, and she did confirm that the state does not publish a proposed budget until after it has been approved. Additionally, Ms. Gray said she would make a copy available in her office for review, or I could FOIA the information through the city law department, and she would help expedite my request. And I do want to thank her for her offers. But in this day and age, with technology and transparency, I would think it would behoove the city to put its proposed detailed budget on its website. I know the state doesn't require it, but we can step above the board and do better. No reason for an individual to have to take time out of their day to come in to review the budget, or to FOIA this and pay the nuisance fee, the FOIA nuisance fee, to have a copy made. And for those of you that are less than computer savvy, anything that is printed can be scanned to a PDF form and easily uploaded to a webpage. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
Alvin Cheeks, 800 block of Merrill Street, Hammond, Indiana. I'm gonna do B, C, and D. I'll take the Redevelopment Commission document first, and then I'll take number C. I mean, number D last, if you don't mind. I'm in favor of the Hammond Redevelopment Commission budget. We've had some fiscal great things going on in our district with the CGB allocation dollars. In the old days, it was only a million dollars of LRS money. Now, it's big enough that we can get some economic development things done. Over the years, I spoke to Mr. Tellon about adding the golf court, the one-hole component, you know, for the first tee, where kids like my son Alvino can get their putting in, in regards to that. The last one I'm gonna do is D, which is, I'm gonna do Chapter 77 of the Municipal Code in regards to the amendment documents, therefore, Mr. Chairman. I grew up on Merrill Street. I grew up and got baptized at New Hope Church. So I'm not against the church. I grew up in the church. I'm speaking in regards to Chapter number 77 in regards to the amended document. My component is that, on a bad Sunday, we get 625 cars in a three-block area, in a continuous block from Merrill to Morris to Morris to Conkey, from Conkey over to Columbia Avenue, from Columbia Avenue to the Jackson property, which would be Columbia Avenue in the 600 block, in the 6,300 block of Cadman Avenue, Mr. Chairman. We need relief, you know, in terms of how the parking is going, not just for those signs. It's relief in terms of, we didn't get the yellow markings in regards to our driveways being blocked. When the document was put forth before the Board of Works, Mr. Chairman, it should've been put before the council first. And in 1918, when the council first adhered to bringing forth documents before the Board of Works, in 1918, they brought it before the city council. And then when they established the Board of Works, which got established in the 1930s, they started taking substantial documents before the Board of Works, Mr. Chairman. So my contention is that it should've went before the Hammond City Council first, and then those amendment documents then get sent over to the Board of Works. No conjecture documents could I find that said you have to have a vehicle, or you could be a homeless person and conjecture document in the city of Hammond. Some of the arbitrary questions that took forth in last week caucus chamber, Mr. Chairman, inherited itself in regards to an individual had to be of a driving nature to contest a document in the city of Hammond. The arbitrary documents in 1930 suggest that anyone that had a conjecture argument against the document can go forth and go before this body. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm contesting that, number one. Say, for instance, I park in 1100 block of Merrill. The sign says church parking only, and I go one block over to a memorial church. Or if I park right there, and I go one block over, and I go to Mount Zion Temple. Or if I go one block over, and I go to New Salem Church. So an officer like this gentleman here couldn't write a ticket because it says church parking only. So I would give the contention, Mr. Chairman, that as long as I'm going to church, that would be adequate parking. I did bring that forth to Ms. Vines in terms of the language on the document. It gives arbitrarily right for, what if a person's in a rental car, sir, and they don't know whose vehicle it is, and they still park in that conjecture area? It would lend itself to that amendment document, Mr. Chairman, not being what forth, and the head of traffic couldn't write a ticket for him because he could be two blocks over at a different church, Mr. Chairman. So my argument is that I'm not against amended documents, Mr. Chairman. I'm against amended documents the way they were put forth to the council, and that the council didn't have arbitrarily right for us to view the documents within the law. If you look at 1992, I conjectured a document, which was a comprehensive land use, excuse me, the comprehensive land use document that came before this body. I won a case in Judge Weber Court, which Mr. Berger represented the Hammond City Council, and it was a gentleman named, it was a gentleman that represented the mayor at that time, and we won a conjecture argument in regards to the comprehensive land use plan. So I'm just saying, it doesn't, it's not a conforming use in terms of the comprehensive land use plan, Mr. Chairman, in that the comprehensive land use plan should've been used to put forth this document. So that's what I'm saying, Mr. Chairman, is that I'm not against the document, I'm just against the way the document was put forth before the council. And then how's a police officer gonna write me a ticket if he don't know what church I'm at? It says church parking only on Sunday. For sure, 650 people go to church, you know, so which church are they at, Mr. Chairman? So that would be my conjecture argument. The other argument is that, you know, you put, if you put the yellow lines in one block, Mr. Chairman, then you should put them in all of them. If they were gonna start putting them, they should've done them all at one time and not give the opinion that Councilman Higgs is just showing preferential treatment to one area when he didn't put the yellow lines there, Mr. Chairman. That would be it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Anthony Higgs, Third District Councilman of the City of Hammond. As I stated previously in caucus, in regards to the signs, church parking signs, the problem I had was the yellow lines that were placed in driveways in the 1100 block. There are also handicapped individuals that live in the 1000 block, which also will be affected by not just one, but two churches. Me personally, I have no opposition to the signs being placed there, but it was the procedure that was followed. In regards to placing the signs, there is a procedure in place when we place signs up. And from my understanding, what was told to me by Reverend Pope, that the issue came up with the residents next door to the church, when there is a service, or a funeral service, they would block and prevent the hearse from funeral homes from parking, and make it accessible for them to actually park there. And there was some belligerent activity that took place with the resident next door with some of the church members, which I also understand where they're coming from in regards to. No one wants to be harassed or intimidated just because you're parking your vehicle. So hopefully, this issue can be resolved in some form or fashion, but we have to actually look at all avenues in regards to signs. If you're gonna start putting signs at one church, you have to also look throughout the entire city and understand that that may become a problem throughout the entire city. And in the future, I would hope that whoever suggested that they would initially come to the council, councilmen of the Third District prior to placing the signs, instead of placing the signs, and then it become an issue with the council. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. Herman Pope, pastor of the New Hope Baptist Church, 1117 Merrill Street. First of all, I want to share with the council, not being a politician, I did not know proper procedure as far as how signs would come about. Someone shared information with me to go to the Board of Works, went to the Board of Works. Board of Works didn't tell me I had done anything wrong, but we here tonight. And the reason we're here, and I don't understand the opposition, but I'm speaking on behalf of a church that has served the community, and they act as if the church is not a part of the community. We have done what a church is supposed to do. We've helped those from the community who are not even a part of our church. The only thing we were asking for was cooperation from the neighbors. We didn't get that. If you check, there have been numerous calls to the police department for disturbances. What I was trying to do was circumvent a problem. One of the neighbors actually bumped one of my member's cars. This is a male who attacked a female. I'm a husband, I'm a father, but I'm a pastor. I wanted to do something to keep a problem from happening at our church.
Amen.
So now, the opposition to how it's done, I apologized to the councilman once before, I apologize to him again. I didn't know protocol, but these signs are not to anger anyone, but they're actually to give respect to families who we funeralize. There's no reason why we shouldn't be able to have the opportunity to give respect. Heard somebody say something about cones. You can't put a cone in a place where cars are already parked, and that's the problem we have. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else like to speak in public hearing?
Good evening. I would first like to address B.
State your name and address.
Sorry, Carlotta Blake King, 1004 Highland Street. The 2016 Redevelopment Budget Proposal, I concur with the young lady from Fourth Street indicating the problems of actually looking at these budgets to really assess them and ask a proper question. Additionally, when it comes to the redevelopment budget, at the mayor's night out, there was a lot of conversation regarding the blight within the Second and Third District, and how seemingly nothing is being done. I'm wondering if there's anything in this budget that's gonna address the blight within our city. We're constantly tearing down, but we're not putting anything in its place, and the mayor indicated that they're not in the business of building homes. Well, I find that rather startling, ridiculous. We have a chodo in the city of Hammond. There's various federal programs. I don't know if redevelopment is utilizing them, affirmatively affirming fair housing. It's a known, federal-funded avenue to find dollars to actually redevelop homes, rehab homes, and the Second and Third District is just deteriorating. And I know the majority of those dollars for this kind of redevelopment comes through, as you know, Spitali, as a former redevelopment commissioner, you know dollars are assessed or set aside for that purpose. I don't see the dollars being there physically. I don't see it on paper. We just don't see it. So those are my comments for public expression. I do hope you take them to heart, because something needs to be done about the blight in this city. Letter C, 2016 Sanitary District Budget Proposal, I've been asking questions regarding the sale of water, and according to the Hammond Times, the courts denied us the right to do that, to pass on and increase to the various cities. And in the paper, Mayor McDermott indicating that they were going to appeal it. Those dollars, are they factored into this 2016 Sanitary District Budget Proposal? Will it affect it? Because I understand we were depending on the sale of water in various cities to make sure the funding would be there. So for matter of record, I'm still asking the same question. Where are we with this sale of water and this lawsuit that was filed, and that was denied, denied by the appellate court? And finally, on the letter D, 1540, regarding the signage at 1117 Merrill Street, it's not so much that I'm in opposition of that sign. I did have questions that no one seemed to want to answer them, and my biggest concern is, an ordinance of this nature, once that sign is there in stone, if I park there, I could be ticketed, fined, my car could be towed. I mean, is that fair to me as a homeowner and a taxpayer, that on a Sunday, that there's no service there, and myself or any other neighbors, the homeowners? They might be having something with their families, and there's an open park there. So, and if they choose to park, they are subject to a fine. That's the law, an ordinance. It's not something that we can just go willy-nilly. So, church-only parking sign, I think we've gone a little far. I talked to Stan about this, and he understood that was the first request of its kind, and there's no church-only parking sign in this city. So my concern is the language and what it infers, that I can, my car could be towed, I can be fined, I can get a ticket, I can go to court. If I have to park at that sign, it's not fair to the homeowners who live there and have to address that. And as it being a church, we know the Bible says we're not to sow discord. We're supposed to love our neighbors. If we love ourself and loving our neighbors, we love them with patience and kindness. And again, as I addressed you, Councilwoman Vines, about the comments you received during your canvassing, it's my understanding that one, a couple of homeowners were quite adamant about this sign. I mean, who wants to come to a council meeting and say anything about a church? Nobody wants to do that. You're gonna keep your feelings and just say, oh, well, kaysara, kaysara. But in my opinion, we're using a bully pulpit to resolve something that could be resolved among themselves, as opposed to coming to you all, the city, create an ordinance, the law, that's gonna act as a bully pulpit on me or anybody else that chooses to park there. So I understand now you had a problem with the neighbor, but again, are there any police records army of this? I don't know. But sowing discord among the neighbors and anybody else is not good. Love your neighbors as you love yourself. Love is kind and patient. Psalms 33:1, "Behold, how good and pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity." And when is enough is enough? The city has given them a whole block to park. Given, granted, gifted. Is that not enough? I mean, our church is right around the corner. There is congestion there every Sunday, or anytime there's services there. We can't even park where we park oftentimes. So the congestion is there. So we're gonna satisfy one parking space. I mean, when is enough is enough, and it's obvious to me that, for whatever reason, they have carved a good relationship with this city, that anything they want, they can get. So I feel there's a bully pulpit that is being used on the neighbors. People aren't gonna speak up because it's simply the church, and that's historically. Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to speak on our public hearing?
George Steyer, Robertsdale. I'm a little confused as to what we're talking about, one with respect to the parking schedules. I thought that was a schedule of price for various violations. Am I true, am I correct on that, or is this about various ordinances privilling the church or not privilling a church throughout the city? Secondly, with respect to Ms. King's raising of the water issue and a court ruling, I'm not also, can you guys, has there been any discussion? Have we not lost a water contract to the, to City of Chicago Heights? I mean, I don't know. I'm asking. So, and I know that, I don't know that the Water Department is, you know, I know you guys may have to pass on their budget because they're not elected as board members, but I mean, I don't know. But I was just curious. She raised it last time we were here, and I wish somebody would say something about whether it concerns the water contract, because, I mean, would that fall into any of these categories if we're gonna pay more for water? So I'm just raising the issue. I just look for clarification. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on our public hearing on these four issues? Public hearing is now closed. Moving on to communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I received a correspondence from Cal Bellamy. It says, "September 14, 2015, Candidate-Elect Pledge. Dear candidate, during your spring primary, we asked you to sign a Candidate Ethics Action Pledge, developed by the Standard Ethic Advisory Commission. Thank you for responding to our request. Around October 15, we will be releasing to the media the name of the candidates who have signed the pledge, unless we hear from you. Otherwise, we will include you on the list and assure you your commitment still holds. Working together, we can build an ethics culture in Northwest Indiana. For more information on the commission, please visit our website at www sharethics.com. Sincerely, Cal Bellamy."
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
The Nation of Islam, Honorable Anthony Higgs, Third District Councilman, Hammond, Indiana, 5925 Cademan Avenue, Hammond, Indiana, 46320. On behalf of the Honorable Minister Louis Farrakhan, National Representative of the Most Honorable Elijah Muhammad and the Nation of Islam, would like to extend our sincere gratitude to you for your support and participation in accepting our invitation to attend the recent Justice RE's Leadership Summit in Chicago, Illinois, at the Salem Restaurant on June 12. The Nation of Islam has 80 years' history in working with strong black leadership, both city and state and federal levels, and are sincere in our efforts to raising the standards of living for the suffering masses that were elected to serve. Our research has identified you as one who has stood in the face of adversity, to challenges, existing policies, as well as fights to adopt new policies that would serve the best interests of your community. Therefore, we command you on your good work and that you do what's needed for the Third District. In closing, we look forward to working with you in the months to come, as we are now organizing and mobilizing our local and national levels to inform and prepare our people, black, brown, red, yellow, poor, white, to get to Washington, DC on 10/10, to be a part of this 20th anniversary commemoration of the historical Million Man March that has been announced by the Honorable Minister Louis Farrakhan. This gathering is titled Justice RE's. Elijah Muhammad, State National Assistant to Honorable Minister Louis Farrakhan. National Center, 7351 South Stony Island, Chicago, Illinois, 60649.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
The Circuit Court of the Sixth Judicial Circuit of Michigan, Anthony W. Higgs, Councilman, Third District, 5925 Cademan Avenue, Room 207, Hammond, Indiana, 46320. Dear Mr. Higgs, it was great to meet you at the National Black Conference of Local Elected Officials, NBC Leo Annual Meeting, beautiful sunny in Fort Lauderdale. I thought it was enjoyable conference and appreciated the opportunity to present you with the panelists and seminar participation. It was great, it was truly an honor to receive the NBC Leo Justice Thurlgood Marshall Award. I have pledged proudly to display in my chambers. If I can be of any assistance in the future, please feel free to call upon me, and we continue working together to educate our communities. I can be reached at my chambers at 248-858-0371, or call me at my home. Thank you for your participation in your community, and keep up the good work.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Received a correspondence for a tree at 6323 Jackson Street. Says, "Councilman Higgs, per your request to remove the tree on the above-addressed applicants attached, our tree foreman has carefully reviewed the situation with the tree and determined that the job is out of our ordinary, and the needs are more skilled crew to complete the job. We ask that you, in the rare case you consider contacting a true removal expert. Sincerely, Johnny Perez, Deputy Director of the Public Works."
Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Moving on to committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Council as a whole will be bringing out 1539 and 1540, and also 1538.
Any other committee reports?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I did want to make the announcements for the Crime Watch meetings, the community and Crime Watch meetings, excuse me. On Wednesday, October 7, Edison Community Watch will meet at Edison School, 6:30 PM. On Friday, October 2, Edison Community On Friday, October 2, Edison Community Watch on the Road will meet at 1:00 PM at the Golden Manor Senior Apartments. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, October 2, 9:15 AM at Irving School. Jefferson Crime Watch will meet Wednesday, September 30, 6:30 PM at Jefferson School. Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will meet Tuesday, September 29, 6:30 PM at the American Legion on Goslin. And the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, October 8, 6:30 PM at Calumet College. I did want to announce also that Edison Community Watch is partnering with the Eastside Community Council once again this year, along with Home Depot, and we will be hosting Trunk or Treat on Halloween from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at Home Depot. If anyone is interested in promoting your group, you are more than welcome to contact myself or Leroy Howard, and we will make sure that there is enough space for your vehicle to pass out candy to the children. And that is how change happens, one person, one gesture, one moment at a time. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Moving on to ordinances, third and final reading.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Ordinance 1538, an ordinance creating a new fund, Fund Number 208, for the City of Hammond Fire Department for special event compensation.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Council whole's gonna bring out 1538 for a third and final reading.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Kowinski, for final passage of 1538. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hayes.
Can I get a general idea of what this fund is proposed to be doing in regards to the fire department?
Mr. President.
Chief Smith.
Councilman Hayes, in the past, the guys would work special events at the marina, at the Port Authority, for the Port Authority, and they would get paid from the Port Authority and it would be put on their payroll check. State Board of Accounts came in and told us that we weren't allowed to do that anymore. Contact the City Controller. State Board of Accounts suggested we create a fund. They suggested that we created a separate fund that's only for special events, so when these guys work, the paycheck will come to Controller's office, will go into that fund, and that fund will pay those guys. It'll never carry a balance except for a couple of days until they get paid. Before it went on their payroll check and they said it wasn't the right way to do it.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hayes.
So, what you're saying is any special events that are, that the fire department works...
The guys work as EMTs, paramedic or EMT typically?
Before you explain, my question is to you, is that any firemen that work a special event, when they work this special event, that company or organization will have to present a check to the City Controller. In turn, the City Controller will refund those firemen that work that event.
This would be for events that would be held with outside entities that are connected to the city, like the Port Authority, so not a special event for like the City of Hammond itself. So, if the Port Authority wants to hire the fire department for a concert, they would pay for that and they would send a check to the city. It would go in this non-reverting fund. This basically allows us to not take away from the overtime accounts that are used and the purpose for those are to use the firemen and their overtime purposes in the general use of the city. So, we would otherwise have to come and get an additional appropriation and then send it up to the state to do an additional appropriation. This allows us to create a fund for only those special event situations where they would be used by an outside entity.
Are they, any, in general, are there, have they been identified, those?
It happens mostly with the Port Authority when they have events over the summer. Our ordinances require that they have public safety officers available for those events and they have to hire our firemen for that. And so, this, rather than allowing that to come out of their overtime that you set aside in the budget every year, this makes it a separate fund, so it doesn't take away from those numbers.
Jeff, is there a certain fee that there, that you guys charge for these events?
It's a, it's set in ordinance, I believe. It's, if there's alcohol served, it's $30 an hour. If it's non-alcohol, it's $25 an hour. So, like one of the concerts that they had at Pavilion this year, not the Festival of the Lakes Pavilion, not the Festival of the Lakes Concert, any other concert, it's usually paid through the promoter. The promoter will pay, send the check to the Controller's office and then that's how the guys that worked will end up getting paid. But if it's alcohol involved, then it's $30 an hour, non-alcohol, it's 25.
This mirrors the ordinance that you already have in place for the Police Department. They're used more often and so it was put in place in the past years, and now with the more events that we're starting to have held at the Pavilion, especially in the summertime, which is ran through the Port Authority, this need has come up.
Any other discussion? Carman roll call vote on 1538.
Markovich, Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Yulaki.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Hinoza.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes, 1538 passes, 7-0, two absent.
1539, an ordinance, amending ordinance 8282, also known as Section 150.072 of the Hammond Municipal Code, as it pertains to the registration of vacant and abandoned buildings in the City of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 1539.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Vines for final passage of 1539, second by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hayes.
I'd like Councilwoman Vines to explain this particular ordinance so that we get a general idea of what's gonna take place once it's implemented.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
This ordinance originally referred only to commercial and industrial properties that were abandoned and vacant, and now we are expanding it to include residential properties. The property must be vacant for 90 days. It must not, it cannot be up for sale. If it's up for sale, then it is exempt from this. But if it is vacant or abandoned for more than 90 days, the owner of the property will be required to register with the city at a cost of $300.
Any other discussion? Carman roll call vote on 1539.
Markovich, Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Yulaki. Hicks.
No.
Emerson.
Yes.
Hinoza.
No.
Opinker.
Yes, ordinance passes 5-2, two absent.
1540, an ordinance to amend Chapter 77 of the Hammond Municipal Code as it relates to parking schedules for 1117 Merrill.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 1540.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Vines for final passage of 1540, second by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, as you heard during public expression, I mean, the public hearing, this is regard to church-only parking signs in front of New Hope Church. I did canvass the neighborhood, the 1100 block of Merrill. Nine of the residents had no problem with the signs. Five of the residents were not home. One was vacant and only one had a problem with the signs. The problem that that individual had was more with their concern for handicapped parking, and I did advise them how to go about getting a handicap sign in front of their house.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hayes.
Being a member of New Hope Church, I'm gonna abstain from my vote.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I don't believe that we can abstain. If you are on the floor, you must vote.
That's correct. Any other discussion? Carman roll call vote on 1540.
Markovich, Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Yulaki. Hicks. Emerson.
Yes.
Hinoza.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. That concludes final passes of ordinances. Moving on to number nine, introductions of ordinances, there are none. Number 10 resolutions, there are none. Moving on to new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move to cancel the council meeting on October 12 due to City Hall being closed that day.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Hayes, to cancel the next scheduled council meeting due to the holiday. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion granted.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I would like to reschedule that council meeting to Tuesday, October 13, same time, same station, 6:00 PM.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Spitali, to reschedule the next council meeting for October 13, which is a Tuesday at 6:00 PM. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion granted. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hayes.
I received a correspondence from one of my constituents at 51 Glendale Parkway where there are dumpsters and there are garbage that's being placed all over there, so I am requesting that the Inspection Department go and inspect this property at 51 Glendale Parkway, just adjacent to Detroit Street, so that they can inspect it and look at all the debris that's, and all throughout the alley and it's just terrible. So, I'm requesting that the Inspection Department go out and inspect.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Hinoza, to send the inspectors out to inspect, inspect what's at 51 Glendale.
Glendale Parkway.
Glendale Parkway. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion granted. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
Yeah, earlier in caucus, we were spoken to by Donita Washington, and she would like a letter of recommendation for her son to go to an internship. And speaking to the President, therefore, I'd like to make a letter of recommendation by the Hammond City Council that for Jakar Washington, J-A-C-A-R-R, Washington, and have this sent to Brent Stinson, Intern Director from the Democratic Party.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Hinoza, second by Councilman Hayes, to send this letter of recommendation. All those in favor?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hayes.
I'd like to be added as on that letter here as well, a letter submitted.
Did you add Councilman Hayes to that?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Aren't all of your names going to be listed?
Yes, that's coming from the council as a whole, right.
Yes, thank you.
So, we'll all be on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion granted. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hayes.
The annual Hammond Fire Department Fire Prevention Open House at Central Station, 6110 Calumet Avenue, Hammond, Indiana, Saturday, October 3, 2015, at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Station tours, appearances by strictly our fire dogs, Sparky, our fire dog. Free raffle and smoke detectors, raffles and smart TV horseshoe casino value tickets, Jack Benyon Steakhouse, Lost Marsh, Twosomes, and hot dogs, chips, theme here and beat where you sleep. Every bedroom needs a working smoker lounge. See, come see your firefighters in their house. And it's culling contests, bring posters, nine by 11 regarding fire safety to be entered to win a prize. City of Hammond Fire Department. That's Saturday, October 3, 2015, from 10:00 PM to 2:00 PM.
Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Moving on to public expression. First speaker of the evening, and I repeat, you have three minutes, Max Bemis Ann Herbert.
Ann Herbert, 5927 Wallace Road, and I just wanted to thank the council for passing 1540 for the parking at New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, 1117 Merrill Street.
Next speaker of the evening, Ms. Mary Ellen Stazak.
Mary Ellen Stazak, 517 Lewis. Just briefly, I want to comment on the rights of an individual to seek legal recourse if they feel they have been injured. It doesn't matter what color they are, what label they are, whatever. Just because somebody is in a position of authority doesn't mean they have to leave their rights at the door. If they think that they have a problem, something that is bothering them and there is legal recourse, they have every right as anybody else on either side of this divider to seek some resolution to it. You don't have to agree with it. That's cool. That's for the court to decide or the individual to decide. But to give somebody a hard time because they decided to exercise their rights is appalling. Thank you.
Next speaker of the evening, Ms. Ola Smith.
My name is Ola Smith, 825 Becker Street, Hammond, Indiana. I think I've brought this subject up before and everyone is present can probably remember about people respecting each other. If you want respect, you have to give respect. And I've sat here council meeting after council meeting, and I've seen the disdain on some of you people's face. We elected you. You work for us. Whether you like a person or not is irrelevant. It's about city business. That's what should be taken care of. Personal business to be brought to the council floor is really out of order. Whatever issues people have personally, it shouldn't be brought into the council. There's people that's sitting on this council that I probably have issues with, but I don't expect to bring to the council floor and have it aired out. And that's what you all are doing. You're making significant charges against one person when you don't know the whole story. There's two sides to every story, and then there's the truth, and only God knows the truth. So, before you start censoring people, you really should know the whole story, and it's really not for you to make that judgment. That's why there is a court of law.
Next speaker, Ms. Carlotta Blake King.
Carlotta Blake King, same address. I didn't move. I am somewhat disappointed that instead of passing a resolution at 1540, it could have been withdrawn, it could have been tabled, and something else could have been, another resolve could have been done instead of putting a sign there that people now can receive punitive, can receive some kind of punitive whatever on them. And secondly, I just have to mention this, MX Cartoon, I've had the opportunity to actually look at that Facebook page, and it's pretty messy. I consider it hate-mongering. I consider it racist. I consider it sexist. Anytime, and I know freedom of speech, but anytime you can defame the President of the United States, his wife, Hillary, Karen Freeman, with the devil pitches and big red lips dripping, and you can defame these folks and you're using your freedom of speech. But what appalled me more than anything is that some of you folks that I'm looking at is part of that group. is part of that group.
Yep.
I went down, I just, I said, "Just let me see who's a member of this group," and there's several of you council people that are on that group. So, you buy into that hate mongering and that racism. You buy into it, and I resent it, that my tax dollars is paying your salary to buy into that crap. It needs to come down. It's my understanding that MX Cartoon is a Hammond employee, and if that is indeed the truth, it needs to come down, and the mayor even subscribed to that Facebook page. It's insulting, and I'm sick, and I look, and I, that's what appalled me the most, is that some of you folks are part of that group of racism and sexism, hate mongering, the Jews, I mean, when the Pope came in, had him looking ridiculous, his fans, you know, but the board, I'm sick of it. You consider yourself sane and civil, you need to take this somewhere else.
Next speaker, Kathy Hall.
Kathy Hall, 1016 Aimestreet. I have a question about, you voted on $300 for vacant property. If it's vacant, the owner have to pay $300? That's what I have a question about.
That will be answered at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. George Stoya. Final speaker, Mr. Alvin Cheeks.
Alvin Cheeks, 800 block of Merrill. Two weeks ago, I sat in, I sat in that office over there, the caucus. You know, I've been coming here thirty-two years. I, I don't like how I was treated, John, and I have arbitrarily right to disagree with anybody. It's no law, first of all, let me say, my, my sister got flown in here with her doctor and her nurse. My sister has one leg, had surgery four weeks ago. She's in Hammond, and I'm, I'm doing this for her, to keep her from walking through this door. I've been coming here, I've, I've made tons of money in this city, I've lost money, I've went to jail. I will stand here and speak and do what I want, and I'll, I'll stay in this, in this trenches as long as I can. You cannot arbitrarily just gerrymander me. Ola's like a mother to me, and that, that's the only reason I ain't step out of character that day. She raised me from a pup, and she motioned me not to say nothing. My older sister is here, my son is watching, and it, it's just a shame. If, if they want a sign, so be it, but it's creating chaos in my community, it's creating anarchy within the black community, pitting one race against another, pitting one religion against another. My right hand is Muslim, my left hand is Christian. I believe in the truth, I follow the truth, and, and that's all I'm saying. We, we have arbitrarily right to stand here and speak our piece. I say in closing, Councilman Higgs, I would love to see you in Washington. If you want my spot on stage that day, you can have it, brother, I appreciate what you do. Secondly, EA Sports have, have agreed to match you turkey for turkey, Councilman Higgs. My nephew in California is the Vice President of EA Sports, so we want to continue that love that you do. Thank you.
That concludes our public expression. Motion to adjourn?
Yes, some move.
Motion by Councilman Hinahosa, second by Councilwoman Vines. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.